I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, and one God. And here is the law, whatever it takes to address this problem.
We need to vote in the agenda. Dr. Maltween was called away, so he's not going to be here tonight to read the superintendent's report. So can I have a motion to amend the agenda to have the superintendent's report read at our October 18 business meeting?
Still moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Any opposed? So the first thing on the agenda is the business meeting minutes of July 7, 2016. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the minutes? That's everybody, right? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the business meeting minutes from July 19, 2016?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Can I have a motion to accept the minutes from the business meeting from August 2, 2016?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Epstein. Okay. Can I please have a motion to accept the Business Finance Operations Subcommittee minutes from September 6, 2016?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Epstein. Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes from Teaching-Learning Accountability Subcommittee Meeting on September 6, 2016?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Epstein? Can I have a motion to accept the minutes of the Human Resources Subcommittee Meeting from September 6, 2016?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? This is a long list. Can I have a motion to accept the Communication Subcommittee Minutes from September 6, 2016?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Did we get a second?
Second.
Do we get a second?
Okay.
No, I so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Epstein?
Okay, so we have Joanna, Deana, and Chris Redding.
Okay. Can I have a motion to... Is that all set? Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes from the Policy Subcommittee Meeting of September 6, 2016?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Is there a second? I'll second, I was there. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Oh, sorry.
Epstein?
Epstein.
Is there any public comment? Jen? All set? Okay. And we're skipping over the superintendent's report. So the next is the Student Report of Innovation Schools. Danny?
Alright, so I talked to some of the teachers in charge of the Arts Academy, the Academy of Safety, Public Service, and the Movement Science and Athletics Academy, and I also talked to a bunch of students that are involved in those, and they're all starting to make new three-year plans to continue the classes that they're offering and opportunities. And I guess the big kind of takeaway that I got was that there is a lot of unique opportunities in here that, you know, don't go with the traditional English, math, science, social studies. And the major component that I saw is that they're really student-driven. So the teachers are there as resources, but for these students to get those opportunities, they really have to show a desire for that. And I think that's important, rather than getting handed to them. And the other thing that especially the teachers that were... I talked to really emphasized is that they're trying to continually adapt what they're teaching to changes in the field because, you know, a big point of having these academies is to get, you know, students interested in these areas so they can make a career out of them. And so, you know, some of the textbooks that we use in math and English are 30 years old, but the resources that they're using in these academies is all kind of up-to-date and they're changing that. So... And in the future, they all had similar kind of goals, and that was mainly to expand the opportunities outside of the classroom and also make sure that they can continue to have those for students that have, you know, there's only a public safety three right now for students that want to take maybe, say, a public safety four, they want to have that opportunity there. And also, all three of the academies have been working with the local communities a lot, so trying to kind of strengthen those relationships and then also develop new ones. But, you know, there's a program with the Arts Academy where they go to mass art. The public safety kids were... Had an instructor from the FBI come in, so they're, you know, it's not just local. And I guess the big... Another big focus was also trying to give students some of the skills that they need now to get into whatever industry they're interested in, rather than waiting until college. Trying to give them a competitive edge over some other people. That's about it.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, Danny. Okay. So moving on is new business. We have the innovation schools, and I've asked Jonathan to come and speak about the innovation schools.
Yeah, so as Danny referenced, that is on the agenda. The first wave, I think, of innovation schools that were planned, it's been three years that they've been in place, which is really exciting to see that we've had them in place for a little bit of time now. And of course, we've added three additional ones here at the secondary level. So the first, you know, wave of plans, the elementary schools and the first three here at the secondary level, you know, are up for, I guess, reappointment for another three-year term. And so, you know, it's really exciting, the kinds of work that is happening, the deeper learning experiences that are happening, you know, across all of these innovation academies. And, you know, as you look through the plans that are in the packet and the plans that have been submitted, you know, it's kind of envisioning the deeper... The deepening of that work. So, you know, you look at the unit development, the additional professional development, the connections to the communities, these are really the things that are going to happen in a deeper way over the next three years and beyond. So obviously, I'm more familiar with the secondary-level plans than the elementary plans, but I do spend a lot of time with the elementary principals and I hear them talking about the kinds of things. And I think one of the big takeaways for me from those conversations is the unit development, which is really the crux of the curriculum in the classrooms, and trying to really develop out those units of inquiry that are connected to our DDMs, that really try to integrate, you know, for instance, in the STEM and STEAM academies, it's the integration of these different things together so that it's not just a standalone. And I think you hear that, too, when you go through and visit the schools, you hear the teachers talking about, you know, the kinds of things they're working on, trying to take those opportunities to take things that we teach in a silo and really bring them into integration, which is, you know, not that different from some of the things we're trying to do here at the secondary level. You know, Danny, I think, just did a great job of kind of capturing some of the uniquenesses of the academies and what we're trying to do, but there's also an attempt to try to integrate those things into what you might consider like the core, you know, academics. So for instance, somebody who is, you know, really passionate about art and is a part of that arts academy, they have the opportunity to take things in outside of just the art department that really give them a chance to, you know, broaden their experience. So for instance, we introduced a graphic novel class this year. So that was the first thing, first time we had done that, but, you know, again, it's just that connection into the English literature with the graphic novel piece, and, you know, we're going to have students not only just reading and analyzing those things, but actually creating them by the end of those courses. So it's those kinds of opportunities.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Jonathan? Okay. So we need to take a vote. The original six innovation schools, 2013, 2014, were given a three-year approval for their plans. And then the secondary academies were the Visual Arts, Safety, Public Service Academy, the Academy for Movement, Athletic, and Science, and the elementary was the Design and Engineering and the International Baccalaureate. So we need an approval from the school committee to renew the three-year innovation school plan. So can I have a motion to approve each of the innovation school plans that I just named, the Visual Arts, Safety in Public, Science and Athletics, the International Baccalaureate, and the Design and Engineering for a period of three years from 2017 to 2020?
So moved.
Excuse me. I think each academy had to be voted separately.
Okay. So I'll reread that. Okay. So I need a motion to accept the Academy of Visual Arts for a period of three years from 2017 to 2020.
So moved.
Second? Second? Okay. Discussion? No discussion? Okay. All in favor of extending for a three-year period? Any opposed? So we're all in favor. Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the Safety and Public Service Academy for an extension of three years from 2017 to 2020?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Can I have a motion to accept the Academy of Movement, Science, and Athletics for an extension of a three-year period from 2017 to 2020?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Can I have a motion to accept the Design and Engineering Academy at the Page School for an extension of three years from 2017 to 2020?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Our discussion? Can I have a motion to accept the Design and Engineering Academy at the Bagnell School for a three-year period from 2017 to 2020?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Can I have a motion to accept the International Baccalaureate Innovation Plan for a three-year period from 2017 to 2020?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. So those were all approved unanimously. Okay. The next on the agenda is the MSBA update, and it's for discussion. Would you want to discuss that?
Sure, I'll give a quick... Since our last meeting, due dates were met for the enrollment projection and the educational plan. They were submitted on a timely basis, and we've received notifications from the MSBA that they were accepted. We've been asked to come in for a meeting on the enrollment projection part of it on October 12 in Boston, so at least Jeff and I will be going in. I don't know if Jonathan will be available to come or not, to meet with them about the numbers, because you fill in a template they give you and they extrapolate it out to 2025 or 2030, and it doesn't look exactly quite right, so we all want to sit down and talk about it to see if it actually is realistic. You give them projected building and what's on the plan from planning boards in the towns, and they map birth rates and all these fun things to get you where you want to be, but we haven't met all that criteria, so we'll be heading in for that. The next major milestone will be on capital planning and maintenance. That is December 5. It is due, obviously, as the superintendent's alluded to in the past, we're not throwing other things under the bus to get away from to accelerate the process, but we're working diligently to try to get that in ahead of time so we can meet either a November or December meeting for the MSBA, because after that, the only two hurdles left are to a vote by the school committee to appropriate the funds to the school building committee, and then for the MSB to allow us into the feasibility study program. So that's where we are. We are ahead of schedule. We're doing the best we can. The capital maintenance plan will be a little bit more diligent. It's a lot of uploading schedules and maintenance plans and job descriptions and things, but we'll get there as fast as we can. And that's basically where we are now. If you have any questions about any of that, I'll be happy to try to extrapolate further.
Does that involve the building committee, or no?
Not yet, no. At this point, they want to see our job descriptions. I'm putting in budgetary numbers for what we spend on custodial salaries, maintenance, things like that. The towns, they are interested in overrides approved by the towns, and you would think that they'd only be interested in things involving the school, whether it be a school budget or capital items like additions. They seem to want it all, whether you bought a fire truck or bought land. I think what they're gauging is the town's willingness to support a capital override. I think that's what they're looking at, and for the most part, our towns do pass overrides if you prove to them a need. So from what I saw off the initial uploads, there's nothing there that would concern me, but there's no need for building committee yet. It's mainly extrapolating information from our own general sources, as well as towns, clerks, finance directors, those type of people. And that's where we are with that part of it right now.
So has the building committee met yet?
No.
Actually, it hasn't even been approved yet. We'll get to that. That's the next one. That's on the agenda.
Oh, so at the last meeting in August, when we approved the membership...
We submitted it to the MSBA.
They have to approve it.
They have to, right?
Okay.
But that's the general MSBA submission update. Anything else?
Any other questions?
The next one will be a little more.
So the next item on the agenda is the School Building Committee. So I'm going to read what's on here.
Now, does it...
I have this with the amendment page, right? So everybody received an amendment page?
There should be an amendment page to the item C, the School Building Committee. After the initial contact with the MSBA's legal team and our field rep that's been assigned to us there, they had submitted a comment to Jeff saying, "Could you please fix this?" So Jeff wrote his description for the vote. This morning, I got a call from our rep saying that the legal people had some additional additions they'd like. So as best I could, not with Jeff's panache, I'm sure, I redrafted it to include the three items that they want now. And I'll be included with that is I gave you what the original submission looked like, so we can see what the changes will be. So if everybody has this part right here, there you go. That's the original submission of what you voted. What they are requesting, what they originally requested was to represent the office authorized by law to construct school buildings. It's always... Obviously, it's the school committee here, so we thought that the original submission was a good place to put a school committee member as one of the three, one from each town. What they would like that to say, because the way we do business here, is to change that to the school committee chairperson. And by that, obviously, because the way we do things here, obviously, the school committee person will be the signatory, but the school committee as a whole will vote to say it's okay to sign it. So if you look at the first bullet point on the new amendment, it will say, "Assign the role of representative office authorized by law to the school committee chairman," and then "This person will sign all pertinent documents requiring their signature after an approval vote by the entire school committee." So that way, there, if you guys vote to do it, and we're going to vote to do this, then she can come in later and sign it when everything's fine, and you all don't have to be here. Now, what they also requested is, and I explained to them that we wouldn't have another business meeting for a month for every minute approved, is that if you guys do vote to do this tonight, what Mary Ann will do is type up a sheet saying, "This was an actual vote," and it will be signed by Mary Ann as the clerk for you, the secretary for the school committee, and by Lisa, certifying that that vote actually happened, so we could submit the updated form the way they wanted. So that's the first change that they requested. Second change they requested was a little odd to me, but the superintendent of schools has... Was a no as a vote on the committee, even though he was a member. They wanted that to be yes, and their rationale behind it is no person has more than one vote anyways. So in other words, Jeff, Jeff by saying yes to something doesn't count as two yes votes, he's still just one. So even though we changed that to yes, it doesn't change the number of votes on the committee. So they weren't really clear on why they wanted it, they just liked to see the superintendent of schools have a yes next to their name. So we changed the superintendent of schools from a non-voting position to a voting position. No person can have more than one vote, so this will not increase the total vote for the school building committee. So everything remains the same, it just changes that one little thing there. Now, because obviously, we made the earlier change to representative office authorized by law to construct school buildings, that took Mr. Adams out of a slot. So what we're going to do at the very ends in the other is make Wayne Adams in the other section a yes vote down there. Again, it doesn't change the number of people on the committee, it doesn't change the voting, it's just how it is presented. So that is there, at least as of 3 o'clock this afternoon, what they were hoping that you guys would vote to approve tonight, so we can resubmit this updated form, sign it saying that you voted, and get it into them, so we can continue down the process. Hopefully, their legal team, when they get a hold of it, won't have any other further comments, but... So that's...
Okay. On the first page, I think you explained it, I thought it wasn't. On the first page, Jeffrey Maltween says yes. Second page, his name's in another slot, Superintendent of Schools.
Right.
And over there, you change that one to a yes, but you're saying there will be only one vote.
He's only... One person, only one person, one vote is the way they work. So even though you're... They just want it to count as a voting member. In other words, Jeff could be listed, as well as Jonathan, several three or four places here. And they could all... They could give them all yes votes, but when their hand goes up, it only counts as one. So that's...
Okay.
We remain the same.
Any further discussion? Okay. So we need to vote on this. Can I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
Do you have to change... We're going to vote on the one that...
I'll read the whole thing?
The amended part of the information that was submitted. So do we have to approve it? Is it amended to this?
So I'll read it from the amendment. The superintendent recommends that the school committee amend the membership of the school building committee in the following way. Number one, assign the role of representative office authorized by law to construct school buildings to the school committee chairman. This person will sign all pertinent documents requiring their signature after an approval vote by the entire school committee. Number two, change the superintendent of schools from a non-voting position to a voting position. No person can have more than one vote, so this will not increase total votes of the school committee... I'm sorry, the school building committee. Number three, an additional school committee member... Add an additional school committee member to the roster of school building committee. This member will have... Would have a vote on the school building committee.
And I think we should also designate that as Wayne Adams, since he'd be the one shifting into that slot.
Okay. So I'm going to amend this to say Wayne Adams.
Add... Yeah, we could probably say...
Added to the third amendment.
Yep.
So can I have a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent to amend the school building committee as proposed in the rationale statement that I just read, along with the proposed approval procedures for document approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I've already had that, but any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. We'll type something up tomorrow. Please, are you going to be available to the signatory, either late tomorrow or Thursday?
Yeah, call me. Have Mary Ann call me.
Thank you.
I'll come in. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the Memorandum of Understanding.
Yes.
So that's concerning the town of Merrimack. Does anybody want to discuss that?
Sure. In your... That also is a handout to your package. When the package was done, the little back page that gave the signature page was included, I pre-printed it out. This is not a significant change. We've been under a memorandum of understanding with the town of Merrimack for three years now. In the past, we have paid them $18,000 for each of their elementary schools, so $36,000 total check, and the town of Merrimack took care of all the snow removal, outside maintenance, lawn mowing, trimming, edging, any repair work to parking lots, all that fun stuff. Merrimack has lost its contractor for snow removal. So the... Sorry. Mr. Sinabaldi, the director of facilities, or the DPW director, I believe they call him over there, and Mr. Haddon sat down to come up with a newer plan, and this is what they came up with. I still think it's a very good plan. Basically, what it does now, instead of us giving them $36,000 a year, we'll give them $6,000 a year. And the only thing we lose is the snow plowing aspect of it. And in addition to... Although we lose the snow plowing aspect of it, the towns agreed to do the additional sanding and salting of parking lots after a storm. If there's a melt event and a quick freeze and they're out there treating the streets, they'll also treat the parking lots of the school included in this. So basically, we won't be giving them $30,000, and we'll pick up the major storm removal of snow. To that end, if you approve this, we're working on a RFP to go out to bid for snow removal for all of our elementary schools now. We'll still internally handle the middle school, high school complex with our facilities director and his two grounds people. So we'll do it for just the elementary schools for just... For snow removal. And that is the plan, if you guys are willing to okay this.
Okay.
Any questions?
Okay. So the rationale statement is, "The town of Merrimack proposes a reduction of service eliminating snow removal. The annual cost of the plan would be at approximately $6,000. Penticat Regional School District would contract for snow removal." I need a motion. I have this... Excuse me. "The superintendent recommends approval for the new memorandum of understanding with the town of Merrimack for grounds approval." Can I please have a motion to accept the new memorandum of understanding?
So moved.
Second?
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. The next item on the agenda is school choice. So I'm just going to read it from the top down. "Dr. Maltween revised class size for elementary and middle schools. Class size and recommendations of possible consideration by the school committee on September 20, 2016. Penticat Regional Middle School, the average class size in course subject areas in grade seven are 19 students per class due to a somewhat lower enrollment, 225 students than the usual 245 students. The rationale is that there were two school choice applications for grade seven seats on file. I would like a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to open two school choice seats in grade seven."
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Will this be posted in the paper so the communities can have a chance for one of their children to receive the seat?
It has to be by law.
I can certainly speak to Jeff about that.
Well, if it's approved. If it's approved and posted.
If the school committee votes to open up school choice, it has to be by law.
That's right.
Is that true that... Like, do we have to advertise? I mean, I think we should be advertising it. Does anybody know how, if we are required to advertise it? Or we are? And the best way to advertise it would be through the papers?
Yeah. I mean, I personally don't support it. We've worked hard to get away from school choice, but if we are... If the committee votes in favor of it, any person that has a child in that grade range should have an equal, fair opportunity to receive that position. You know, we have two people that applied, and I understand that, but they've come forward without a position available, and now we're talking about accommodating positions, so...
Right. So is that part of the motion to advertise it? Right, so is that part of the motion to advertise it?
I'll make a friendly amendment to save it, um, to add two seats to grade seven, which will be advertised before positions are given to students.
Okay. Is there, um, a timeline? Does anybody know if there's a timeline? Wayne? No, there isn't.
I'd just be, uh, more comfortable if Dr. Mulqueen was here to express his opinion and reasoning for this. Is this something that has to be approved or not approved tonight? Because as I said, I would like to, if, if he's the one that's been working on it, he probably has some rationale that if he were to explain it to us, it may certainly sway an opinion, but to, without him here to put it together, I'd be uncomfortable to vote without him.
Okay, so, um...
I support that idea for the, uh, I want to hear more about this and why we're, uh, we've worked so hard to go in the other direction, and now we're, I think it sends a mixed signal.
Okay, Chris?
Well, I was just going to say that I think Dr. Mulqueen has, has given his support of this by putting it to us. Um, I would think that by waiting another month, then you're waiting for students to start school another month, so.
That's definitely a strong match.
Also, the, um, advertising is sort of a side issue here. This is whether we're going to approve the seats. If we do have to advertise it, could certainly work with Dr. Mulqueen to get it in the paper and even on the face, in Facebook and stuff. So, if, we'll talk to him after the fact about that, if we have to do that.
Could, um, I mean, I knew, normally don't speak here, but can I make a suggestion? If, if you are inclined to approve the two seats, and you can say, and the two seats shall be filled according to Mass. General Law.
That's a good point, but I'll change my amendment to that.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm really opposed to opening up school choice. You know, last year, we voted not to approve the seats at the high school. I think that we're sending a real mixed signal to everybody in the community. If we don't approve it one year and then approve it the next year, what's going to start to happen? What I envision happening is people are going to say, oh, you know, once you get to seventh grade, the school committee now is interested in potentially opening up school choice. And you're going to have people coming to us every year, starting, you know, once their kids are in seventh grade, ninth grade, asking us to approve school choice seats. And they're going to, you know, if we say no, like, say we say yes this year and no next year, you know, it's pretty hard for us, I think, to justify that to the community, you know, like, why we did it one year and didn't do it the next year. The other thing is, is we've been pushing really hard on Whittier to not have any school choice seats. And I think that Whittier is going to look at us as, Penticat State, Penticat, what are you doing? You just asked us not to have school choice, and now you're opening it up yourself, so...
Being, being a committee member of Whittier, correct, we did do a way essentially with all school choice. That opened up almost two hundred seats in the Whittier School District for the communities it serves. So the, the communities it serves have a benefit just from that policy. And for me to sit on that committee or vote one way, I cannot vote another way in this committee. I have to stick with what my feelings and beliefs are.
Any other discussion? Okay, so I'm going to read the proposed motion, the amended motion, which is to approve the superintendent's recommendation to open two seats in grade seven that will be filled according to Mass. General State Law. All in favor? So I have Andy, Chris. Okay. Opposed? Joanna, Ryan, Doug, Lisa. And abstain. Dina and Wayne. Motion failed.
Excuse me, am I allowed to speak at this time? According to the school choice.
We had public comment at six forty this evening.
Okay, I've been here the whole time.
Um, we had public comment at six forty, and there was nobody in the audience. The only person that was here was...
I've been here since six thirty.
Again, we had pub, you can watch the tape. I'm not going to argue with anybody, okay? We started the meeting at six thirty, and on time, I, I asked anybody in the public to speak. The only person that was here were the two boys that are taping and Jen Solis. And Jen Solis didn't have anything to say, and the rest of the seats were empty, okay?
I'm sorry.
So I, I, I can't, I'm not even going to apologize. I mean, the meeting starts, it's...
I didn't know if I must, uh, if I must hear you say public comment.
There was nobody here, the seats were empty.
And you didn't understand the procedure, obviously. Okay, is there a way that I can...
There'll be another meeting next month with a public comment section, and you can speak then. The agenda's already, the agenda's already been, the, excuse me, I'm still talking. The agenda's already been approved, okay? Public comment will be next month, the third Tuesday of the month, at the beginning of each meeting. That's when you can speak. If you would like to write an email to the school committee, the school committee email address is PRSDSC@PRSD.org.
Can I speak under the human resource section of the meeting or not?
Just continue. I apologize. If there is one, but right now we don't have that meeting scheduled.
Okay.
And that won't be until the first Tuesday of the month. I'd like to move on with the agenda, please. The next item on the agenda is the inter-district choice. Dr. Mulqueen reviewed class sizes for the elementary and the middle schools. The elementary currently is seventy-four percent, forty-nine of sixty-seven. Up in Penticat's elementary classes have enrollments of twenty or thirty, I'm, excuse me, enrollments of twenty or fewer students. Sixteen percent, eleven of sixty-seven, have enrollments of twenty-one or twenty-two students. Ten percent, seven of sixty-seven, have enrollments of twenty-three or twenty-four students. The rationale statement is, inter-district school choice would allow families to make choices. So this is a move between families that are already in the school district amongst the elementary schools. So I need a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent for inter-district school choice. So I'm going to go down each one, and I'm going to request a motion. Actually, I'm not going to request a motion for each one, it's just going to be all in our plot. The Page School opened three seats in grade two and opened two seats in grade four. The Bagnell School opened two seats in grade one and opened two, two seats in grade five. And at the Sweetses School, opened two seats in grade two. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussions? Chris?
You first.
Um, so my concern with opening some of these up is that grade two at Page was the grade that we added a section to, um, at the end of, in the spring budgeting season or something. So right now, they have very small class numbers, but it was a toss-up as to whether grade two or grade three would get it, the extra session, section, sorry. So my concern is if we have a few of the grade two students move out, we're committed to having three sections of grade two. And we might have more of a need numbers-wise to have had that extra class at grade three or grade four, grade three it was, I think. So my concern is that by, we might be manipulating these numbers on a go-forward basis to continue to have, like, twenty-four students in a class at a grade level, that natural shifts would cause that to be the grade level next year, to have more sections than the other grade level, to have fewer. Does everybody get what I'm talking about?
I'm trying to get my, where I want to say.
So, so essentially, this is what happened to my, my, one of my daughters, um, when she went through the Page School, is that they had so many choice students coming in, and it could be outside choice or inter-district choice, that they became the huge class size. But the numbers last year...
So you're saying that the following year, it'll trip into a bigger class?
It, it could, that, you know, natural move-ins and moves-out. Next year, the second grade that has three sections might be a third grade that has two sections, because the numbers are higher at a different level. Excuse me, um, at a different level on the grades. So I'm just worried that we're not naturally moving in and out students, but that we're putting kids and we're setting ourselves up to have higher class sizes in certain grades that weren't given an extra session, section. So that's just my concern, and it's because I know, like, Dina, you know, so grade two got the extra session, section. Grade three didn't. But grade three has, like, twenty-three, twenty-four in a class, or it's one of the higher level ones.
And also grade five is a problem, too.
So next year, couldn't the grade twos get the, I mean, the grade three get the three sections instead of the grade two?
It could, but now you're adding extra seats to smaller class size. So you're, so you're unnaturally making them bigger classes, even though it's not just the West Newbury students causing that for the move-in and move-outs.
Well, if you, if you move the section, how do you make the class size bigger? I don't know what you're saying there.
If you, so this year, I think, grade three could have gotten that extra section.
Yeah, so you would have lowered...
Because the numbers were that close.
So you would have lowered the class size?
In grade three.
Yeah.
But now, in grade two that has the three sections?
Yeah.
If you put more students in, you're kind of committing to you have to have three sections in that grade as it moves up.
Okay.
Whereas next year, grade three might be the one that has larger numbers, that it needed the extra section for grade four.
If we had move-ins?
If you had move-ins, or even if you have move-outs in grade two. Or special ed needs that...
But I, I don't see how your class size would change moving from two to three if the section moved, unless you had move-in, unless you had move-out.
I'm, I'm talking about the current grade three moving up, so grade A, grade B, great that stays the same as it moves up.
Right.
So grade A right now has three.
Yeah.
Grade B has two sections. But by adding in additional kids in grade A, as it moves through, you've committed to three sections of that grade.
Right, you'd have to move the section as the kids move.
Whereas grade B throughout, might, it's, might stay at twenty-four, but might go up to twenty-five. I'm just worried that we're not, that we're taking low-grade levels or low-class sizes, and we're manipulating them without realizing that the numbers are so close in all the schools now, where there's two or three sections per grade, where we could create, in my mind, especially with three seats, you could be creating a situation that you're committed to that.
And I agree, I agree with you. You know, we, we've been trying, since I got on the school committee, to lower our class sizes, you know, and I think we've done a wonderful job at it. I mean, we, we could say, I mean, if it got to that point, we could say no for those seats, I mean.
I'm kind of confused, and what's the purpose? I mean, we're looking for people in one community to move their child into a elementary school in the other community. Is that what, this is all...
We're giving them the choice.
But you may, you may have a teacher that, that lives in Merrimack, that teaches at Page or at Bagnell, and they want their student to go there, so it's an inter-district...
Okay, so that's a really...
Do we know if that is the case?
I, I don't know. I, that's just a scenario I was throwing out there.
Uh, I mean, one scenario I wouldn't like to see is if we had a problem in an elementary school, you know, is, is it not being brought to our attention? So, just putting that out there, I don't know. I'm not saying that's the case at all, but, um, it's just...
I don't know myself, I don't have the answer.
I don't think we've had a lot of...
Requests?
Move-ins or requests or anything. The official enrollment numbers come out for October first. I know Amy, the data specialist, is working on that now. Um, again, this is more in line with what the superintendent does, but sometimes I'll, he'll come into me and talk to me about movements and things like that. And I haven't heard anything about any class sizes increasing over what was projected as we went forward with the budget. Um, I think some of them did go down a little bit when we added the sections at these particular grade levels in each of the schools, elementary schools. So it kind of created an opportunity now, if you had one of the schools that was at that twenty-four range, and the other one was at, like, twenty-five, and you dropped this one, maybe as, like, an evening factor. But I don't think there are a lot of requests or a specific reason behind it. I think it just creates an opportunity to let, level things more across the district. I think it's more the thought process. Kind of like if you, if you were one, say you're at twenty-four, twenty-five in one school, and the other school was that way, you added the section, it was at, like, twenty-six, and you dropped it down. Now, that teacher can follow along, as Brian said, when they move up. But if that, over here, if this school with twenty-five suddenly had two or three move-ins, now we'll be looking at hiring another teacher next year, because now that class would be warrant that type of reduction. Whereas opposed, if they, couple, couple, three kids slid over to the other school where there is that capacity, it wouldn't create that need.
If, if it was driven by teachers trying to keep their children, the school to teach at, then there's an open position, I'm completely for that.
I couldn't say what that's the reason or not. I'm just giving a supposition of what, what you might be looking at here.
Mary Ann? Um, just to remind you that the teacher's contract has a clause now that if, so this isn't about teachers that want to, I work at Bagnell and live in Merrimack, so I want my child at Bagnell, because the teachers have that opportunity as part of their contract now, if there's an opening. This is separate than that.
If, if there's an opening. If you have a situation where there wasn't an opening, correct on that, so...
Any more discussion? Okay. So can I have a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent for inter-district school choice? Page School opened three seats in grade two and opened two seats in grade four. The Bagnell School opened two seats in grade one and opened two seats in grade five. And at the Sweetses School, opened two seats in grade two. We already had discussions, all in favor?
So Wayne, Joanna, Ryan.
Any opposed?
Andy, Dina, Chris. Am I going to abstain? Okay.
I'm going to abstain as well.
It's approved.
So I need a motion. Um, actually, before we, um, we break for executive session, there's a letter here from, uh, Art Reed that I want to read. On behalf of the West Newbury Police Department, I want to thank you for allowing our department to hold its annual national night out event at the high school. I feel it is another great success due to the hard work of many people and organizations. I want to especially thank one of your staff members, Wayne, Wayne Jolena, for helping us out at the night of the event. He was the go-to guy when we needed something done, and more importantly, where to find things. I truly appreciate the collaboration between our two departments. Thanks again for the support, Art Reed, Chief of Police.
He won't do a thing for me.
Okay, and I also received, um, something from Maria Gray. She's the president of the PAT. And it's regarding, uh, question two that's going to be coming up on the ballots in November. So question two, um, if you, I'm just going to read what she gave me. It says, question two would allow the state to approve twelve new Commonwealth charter schools every year forever, eventually draining billions of dollars from our schools. It would encourage charters to expand into cities and towns where they don't exist now, taking critical resources away from successful public schools. This year, charters will divert more than four hundred and fifty million dollars from the public schools, and the money...
Lisa, I don't think that we're allowed to do this. I don't think that we're allowed to give a political opinion as a public body.
Well, she was looking for the school committee's support. That's where I was going with this.
I'm just saying that I think that this is not appropriate for a public body to give a, to give time to this, unless you can give time to both sides.
Okay, well, Maria will be at the next month meeting, the October meeting, so, um, she can speak then, perhaps during public comment to everybody. Okay. So, um, so we have a need for executive session to discuss strategy with respect to, to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect to bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the CHSR declares, um, it's Bakitin versus Penticat in related litigation in the PAT contract. So can I have a motion, um, to enter an executive session and to join the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
You have to roll call.
Roll call? Okay.
And we will not be returning.
We will not be returning to, um, business meeting. Wayne Adams?
Yeah.
Joanna Blanchard?
Yes.
Brian Page?
Yes.
Dina Toronto?
Yes.
Andy Murphy? Andy Murphy?
Yes.
Doug Jolina?
Yes.
Chris Reddick?
Yes.
And myself, Lisa O'Connor?